So this is the um Planning Commission of South Burlington, meeting May thirteenth, we're getting started a little late because of technical difficulties. Um, we so far have only talked amongst yourselves about plants and spring flowers, so you didn't miss anything. Um, we did uh cover items one through three in the cover uh previous uh before we were recording and um there were no items open to the public that were shared, um any announcements? No announcements, any other staff report? There were a few items in the the memo.
Nothing dad, thank you.
Okay, then we can move on to item five, the L E R amendments, updates to technical amendments.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just quickly.
Oh, the technical heights, I see.
Um. It's four. Help me one item on page four.
Of what do we, which um which group of things are we talking?
Okay, but item five, the what's in italics?
Uh, I think we're on, wait, where are we?
You're on the right page Michael.
Oh, no, no, he might be on the right page.
If it's if it is agenda number five, technical heights and to speak with Mister Atherton and.
Uh, no, it's in the memo, it's in the memo.
I think.
You mean the the italicized link?
The cover memo.
Yeah, it's just, it's a minor thing that you you consumer convenience center instead of.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, but it's on.
Instead of um convenience center, you've got consumer in there for some reason.
That's not the item we're talking about.
Oh yeah, that's item six, sorry. Okay, item five.
Ah. Okay.
Which we need to find the.
It's.
Yeah, so item five's got um a memo summarizing the whole thing and then um article individual.
And where is that memo?
It's on page nine.
Page nine.
Oh, I'm way down.
You're you're way down.
Okay, so this memo starts on page nine, it's a separate memo than the overall. And um this is the second or third time we've talked about this item.
Yeah, yeah, talk about briefly initially introducing it, I gave you folks some updates on some of the research and analysis that I had done um back, I believe in the beginning of April, so we're seeing here tonight is a draft of the amendment, a draft, some draft amendments to the articles um that uh came out of that research and analysis based on the feedback that we got from you folks and also some ongoing conversations that we've had with um stakeholders and um and and other sources of information who are expert in things like how to build buildings and um what goes into that and what those needs are. So um the kind of the quick hits are basically that we've um moved the uh uh standard for measuring grade to a finished grade, which is pretty standard for most of the construction industry as well as um every municipality that I spoke with um and uh and then have simplified a number of the uh actual measurement standards for the height above the ground, that part that projects above the ground um moving uh towards just uh gross feet as the 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 main standard for measuring height, relegating stories to a sort of a secondary thing, I can explain a little bit more about the necessity of doing so there. Um and then updating finally the actual height limits based on building type in lieu of the, you know, in light of these changes that we've that uh we made to the uh to the standards for how to measure and how to measure. That's pretty much it.
Right.
Nick.
What?
In in reading through this, I, you know, I find um finished grade, natural grade,
Mm-hmm.
uh, what's the one here, grade plane and one other.
Grade.
And uh this, they all kind of relate to the baseline somehow or other, but could we reduce the number from four to a couple maybe?
Yeah. Oh, so the the you mean the the standards of grading and whatnot?
Yeah, the the nomenclature.
Yeah, yeah, um so.
For example, on this in in the hi- in the definition of height.
Yeah.
Vertical distance from grade plane to the mean roof height.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Shouldn't it be from finished grade?
So, um, that's a good question, um, it would be, um, basically the reason why we've got these numbers of these different definitions in there is that's aligning, I'm basically, I'm using definitions that we took right out of the International Building Code. So grade, you know, uh grade plane is the actual um, the actual standard that is in the I B C um that they use as the basis for, you know, for measuring from the point at which you measure from. Um, we just took that and inserted it into the into our definition, so it's an attempt to align our definitions with the ones that the industry is actually using. Other municipalities have actually gone and done what you were uh suggesting and just use the term finished grade, it's basically synonymous with you know, uh uh stories above great plane or great plane. Um, I chose to to start with this this rap with the more technical definition um and put it in there. Um, it's something that uh some of the the engineers that we talked with seemed to be okay with. They, I did ask them that question and they said, you know, finished grade would also work. So if we wanted to simplify something, that would be one thing to do. Um, that being said, this is actually what we're seeing here in the number of definitions and terms, it's actually a simplification from what we already had.
You know, uh earlier on, you do say that grade plan is is a reference plan representing the average of the finished ground level round finished ground level, which is an another term, so we've got four or five that kind of mean the same thing.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, again, that's just borrowed right from the I B C.
Would it, is it not gonna be confusing to the reader?
The the folks that I spoke with in the private sector didn't seem to think so, so, I mean, it might be the sort of thing that our zoning administrators might have to do a little bit of translation for for your average, like, you know, backyard builder um or something like that, but it seems like the folks who were um, you know, the, yeah, the pros seem to be okay with it.
Okay. The pros.
I think they felt pretty neutral about uh about whether that was necessary, but I figured, you know, moving in the direction of trying to align ourselves as far as definitions go with um the, you know, the like I B C and I R C is probably not a bad idea. Another reason for doing that and argument for that is that um the R Bs and Cs, Energy Efficiency Codes are based on I B C. So the more we can align with one, the more we align with several.
And they don't change this definition regularly.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I mean, that would.
Yeah, the International Building Code.
Yeah.
Like, give us, I have a question, I wanna, um, I mean, I understand grade plane, it's the idea that it's like the
Well, I mean, I didn't.
based on, it's it's about a building, like, you know, what is the, where does the building, where does the building match up with the land around it?
Where does it start?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
And, you know, kind of finding that middle elevation, it's an elevation, elevation.
Yeah, average, average elevation, yeah, yeah.
But like finished grade, it says the actual or intended grade plane after development, also known as finished elevation.
Mm-hmm.
I think if you're gonna, it 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 needs to be specific to a building, right? Cause finished grade, when I think of grade as a civil engineer, I think of like discreet points all over the entire surface of the ground is the grade. Um, so finished grade would be different for every like, every point in your development.
Doesn't seem like that's how the the building trades use it, um.
So they're talking about, but but I think in the definition, you need to say for a building or like there's no, there's no reference to like what it's grade of.
Yeah, that that's.
Cause like if you're talking about finished grade of the ground, maybe in the lawn next to the building.
Yeah, that may be the case, it's just that we don't really regulate people's laws.
It's, it's not a.
So, you know, we're only, we're when when we're talking about finished grade, we're only ever talking about something that is being regulated and the only thing that we regulate in regard, like, fini- the only thing that we that we regulate using the term finished grade or the only thing we reference with finished grade is buildings. We're not, you know, really in the in the, if we were, if we were to.
Do you think you could just add the word of a building? Where, where do you ever, do you ever use it?
But I thought they said finished grade was what a a builder would do prior to construction and then construction is starts from the finished grade.
Finished grade is the average, um, it is, it's the average elevation at the base of a building. Either one that you've represented with a drawing or one that you've built and are now measuring the height of.
Or like, the grade is where the building intersects the plane of the ground.
Mm-hmm, and it's a calculation, yeah.
Yeah.
So if it's perfectly level, the calculation is easy, it's just the same for all four corners. If it's on a some kind of slope, which most buildings are built into some kind of slope, um, but usually very mild, you're going to be taking just that average elevate, the average of the elevation at the extreme corners and that's your finished grade.
Okay, cause in in the definition of the story, there's another I think a different nomenclature, which is finished ground level.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of belaboring this, I I would ask that you look through this and look at all the, all the definitions that you've got that are uh synonymous in a way or similar
Mm-hmm.
and see if they, because I don't see this one anywhere in the definition, finished ground level.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Um.
Yeah, I believe that was just, again, one that uh was just taken straight from the I B C and put in here.
Okay. But don't you need a definition then? Or re- or reference the I B C would be the easiest thing for you to do for all of them.
Um.
Do I B C changes?
It could, um, it's not likely to happen, um, I B C, they do change their standards every once in a while, but changing the definition doesn't happen quite as often. If you'd like me to go back through and.
Well, my, uh, let me, my question was when I finished this, what's the difference between finished grade, finished ground level? And uh, and is there a definition for finished ground level? You've told me there is, it's in the I B C.
Yeah, it's, the 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 definition that you're reading is borrowed from the I B C, so yes, they are largely synonymous.
Okay, can I can I suggest, I think, Michael, that's a good suggestion. The policy question here is that this is establishing grade as once um, once development is complete. And I think, and we can certainly take a double check and make sure that there's not any sort of overlapping definitions, but um I think you're right that you don't need to belabor the point as a as a commission if the the policy question. You okay with that, Nick? And if there's any changes, we'll let you know in advance of the next meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I guess just back to grade, finished grade, I still wonder if the word spring needs to be in there. Cause isn't the whole point is that the plane is an average?
Yeah, yeah.
But when you're talking about finished grade, if you just said it might change, be different at each four corner of the building.
Yeah, if you have like a walkout, the the lower two, you know, corners are going to be lower than the upper two, the the grade plane is going to be the average between those.
Wait, I think the word plane should not exist in the definition for finished grade. Cause it's, finished grade should be the actual or intended grade after development.
Okay.
This plane indicates that you're averaging over the corners. I don't know, maybe I'm, I can all just decide, I guess.
Okay.
I mean, again, this is.
Worth, worth a review.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, that's just, you know, borrowing, like, just borrowing the 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 technical definition from the from the I B C, so.
I didn't see anything else.
And and the real importance of this is to determine the height of the building, the peak, so it's the agreed upon starting point.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Exactly, yeah, that's a great way to describe it, exactly, yeah.
So that's.
That's, that is the way, it can also be averaged if they're both in.
Yeah, I I guess that there's an average.
But we were moving to a definition of el- height, building heights that's a bit more commonplace than the one we were using. So it'll be easier for people to understand.
Yeah, 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 much more standard, yeah, in fact, pretty much the standard, yeah, is is what I figured out.
Yeah.
I mean, I I really couldn't find anywhere else that had other places mentioned natural grade, um, but it's not something that is i- i- is is prescribed, so, yeah.
Seems great, I need, any other questions on this section or comments?
All right.
On item five specifically, you're on this definition.
I think we can let it go.
The whole, all of it, the whole item five.
Um.
Did.
Oh, I, or, yeah, I did, I noticed the uh heights table, yeah, I I overall quite happy with the numbers that you come up with. I noticed the heights table still gives inclu- has inclusionary bonuses for stories from elderly families.
Yeah.
What does that mean now that we don't have?
Great question.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is the one I was hoping you'd add, yeah. Um, so basically, the the um, the reason we didn't just make that a raw uh like number of feet is because I Z has um.
I Z?
Uh, in inclusionary zoning.
Okay.
Um, has uh uh overlap with um statute, so it's, that's a state definition.
Okay.
Like, yeah, inclusionary zoning is something that, yeah, that is, that is mentioned in state law and um, and so it's germane to our our regulations, but it's something that we need to be able to sort of translate. Um, you know, we need to be able to translate our regulations, which are now largely just uh, you know, numbers of feet
Yeah.
um into something that is sort of legally compatible uh or like sort of um, you know, legible.
So it's kind of a little redundant with it, but it's more just kind of.
A little redundant, um, and we, and if you go to uh article three, um, you'll notice, I forgot the uh exact subsection, but there is a section I'm I'm I've been calling the Rosetta Stone, where it, we're just kind of um trans- like defining what a a story is in terms of overall numbers of feet. And so um, I've been using that as the as the basis to quantify what a story means for the for the, you know, uh, like our working definition of story. Um, that's why we kept it in there, otherwise we would have been able to just shift it straight to you get an extra fourteen feet if you are, you know, compliant with uh with I Z. Okay.
So Colin, the way, what happened is in the statutes in the last couple of years, the state added a definition um called an affordable housing development.
Yeah, right. Mm-hmm.
The way that we folded this into our existing inclusionary zoning is we more or less made affordable, the optional program of an affordable housing development mandatory for certain number of units in South Burlington.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
So one of the things that you get as a dent, as a bonus under the state's optional program that we have effectively made mandate, made the state program mandatory over a certain number of units.
Yeah.
Is an additional story.
Mm-hmm.
So if they meet the requirements of the state's optional program, which they have to do to meet our mandatory requirements, then they get an additional story.
Yeah, but it's a little.
Oh, yeah.
semantic, cause it's.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool, cool, okay.
So one thing that I, uh, sorry, Colin, is that satisfactory?
Yeah, exactly, yes, yeah.
Um, one thing I did wanna draw folks' attention to is um in three point uh oh seven, yeah? Accessory structures and all this.
Yeah, I was about to ask about that.
Okay, great, yeah, so um, you know, we were talking about accessory structures last time we visited this subject. And we kind of went back and forth on how we might allow the um, one of the more common uh versions of an A D U, uh where someone might wanna put um an accessory dwelling unit above uh a garage or a shed or, you know, and some kind of outbuilding. Um, and uh knowing that there is some some interest in doing that, and so we already actually allow, do allow that um although through a more sort of um complicated process. Um, so the suggestion that we've made here um is to allow accessory structures up to twenty eight feet, which is the current standard for a single family home. Um, and, but only in cases when that is going to result in a structure with two habitable stories. This would prevent, we feel, uh, someone building some kind of enormous twenty eight foot manor on their, on their uh, on on their property and saying, oh, yeah, well, it's gonna have an, it's gonna have an A D U in it someday and then just parking an R V in it forever and ever or something along those lines.
So if somebody wants to build a garage with the dwelling atop of it, that wouldn't work.
Well, that would work, yeah.
That would be.
But how are those both hell?
They might have to call it.
Cause the the garage is.
Yeah, it's not.
Garage is is a.
That's where your car lives.
Yeah, 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 we may have to, we may have to tweak the wording a little bit, but that is the intent that we're going for basically, is that
Yeah, okay. Okay, alright, alright.
have two, maybe it's too functional, you know.
Yeah, cause I, that, two, I don't necessarily think of a garage as habitable, so like.
Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a good catch, thank you Duncan, we we all admit, this is the last thing that we got to in this, in this edit, so.
I know.
Yeah. Yeah. But.
In practice, we're, we're allowing accessory dwelling units or accessory structures up to twenty eight feet now across the city, no. No, today the practice is generally fifteen feet, but there is a process whereby you can seek conditional use review, it's in the strike down part.
Mm-hmm.
Residential uses up to twenty five feet, um, but the property, but it has to be located X distance, the structure has to have to pitch roof and the structure has to be um, the property has to be at least an acre in size, so there's, there's a lot of qualifications to it. Um, we went around on the subject of, could you only allow this for accessory dwelling in this?
Could there be a trust?
Cause that was the question you were asking, and it got sort of a little bit messy of, well, you know, what if you build it first as a guest room above and then wanna convert it later into accessory apartment, you can't do it, you know, you sort of get into this messy, so that's how we got to a second habitable story. But this is not state law, this is your option.
Hmm.
If you choose to to allow for that, as Nick was describing, sort of second story apartment over a garage. Yeah, sorry, thi- this would be allowed. In all residential units.
Yeah.
In all residential areas, I'm sorry, yeah, that's what I meant to say.
Yeah.
Quick clarification on the old one they're striking. It said, an associated unit or portion thereof is supposed to be within a use within the, is proposed to be within, within the required setback. Does that mean that it conforms to the setback requirements?
Uh, no, it's it's even, it allows you to build into an area that would otherwise be reserved.
Three hours.
Okay, so are we now removing the option to do that by striking that section in article fourteen?
S- so that actually is a separate, this is the thing that we found was written twice.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
What?
So, uh, so no, basically there was, we, we, yeah, in addition to changing this, the the qualifications for what we would allow in this case, we also found out that that thing that you just mentioned, that that language was included twice.
Oh.
So we are striking it from this section, but retaining it where elsewhere, yeah.
So.
Okay, six or four, do you think?
So therefore, so so the understanding is we now look at twenty eight in eh, in in general anywhere, but are we still allowed to build it within the setbacks?
Those would be mutually exclusive.
Okay, so it's fifteen feet, it can be butting up against the property line, but if it's.
Being a little closer to your property line, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It can be, yeah, or plus the property line, so sorry, you you conditionally ignore setbacks, it's under fifteen.
That's the intent, yeah.
And it's twenty eight, it has to sort of act as though it's a normal house effectively.
That's the intent, the idea is sort of, you know, these are the sort of, those are the kind of
Okay, yeah.
um, marginal but more common than you might think scenarios where someone might be trying to build out an A D U on the cheap in their
Like a tropical place.
in their limited space, trying to build out an in-law apartment, often you're limited by space proximity to the house or the driveway. You, so your options are often, well, I'm I might need to encroach on my setback a little bit to pull this off feasibly or, hey, wouldn't it be great if I could put something up above my garage? Or when I rebuild my garage, build in enough enough height above it to have um, under some habitable space.
Yeah.
So the intent is to sort of allow both of those options to to be built out to a, they're practical.
Okay.
You know, to to be, to actually be practical, yeah, yeah.
No, I I, I I'm pretty happy with that, yeah, I I saw that struck and I was like, wait, we can't do anymore, so, yeah, I think that two-tiered system, I like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and and in B, that reverts to the standards for uh, if for for industrial uses in non-res- residential districts, uh, the heights of, uh, as for principal structures.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, and that's unchanged from current policy, that just moved a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
So you see it struck there and then written right below, it's just, that's just how.
Yeah.
So I I have a question, can you have two different A D U units in the same building?
No, you can only have one A D U.
Okay, so we.
So if you had more, then you can.
Change that habitable then.
But what you.
Cause that sounds like you could do upstairs for one in-law and downstairs for the other.
So what you, what you can.
Can.
But what you can do on a small, not A D Us, units, yes, A D Us, no. You can only have one A D U on a property.
Okay.
You can have multiple, at this point now, if your lot is under two acres, you can have more than one principal structure. So you can have your single family home and you can have a duplex, either stacked this way or divided this way somewhere else on your property that meets the height requirements and meets the setbacks of a duplex.
And the lot size.
And the lot size of the duplex, so you can have that if you meet all of those other requirements, but you can't have two A D Us.
Okay, thank you.
But but I think you're, the point is taken, we'll clean up that language a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, we do need.
But A, A says you can, two habitable, two.
We're in the change that have.
Two habitable stories does not mean two units.
Do you have like, a s- uh, you have, you you have a A D U spans to stories?
House, and two habitable stories, I have an upstairs and a downstairs, it's one, one unit, but.
Right. Right. Yeah, one unit.
That's what it's saying.
Upstairs and downstairs.
I I, I think we would probably tidy the language to say
Yeah.
that the point of this was to not, was to make sure that you don't have just really tall garages. If you're gonna allow this additional height, it's to get a home being built.
Right.
So I think it it, the point was to make it two stories and that the second story would need to be habitable area.
But could, could, are we fine with having this big skinny little like two-story A D U?
I'm about to, about the ground. Sure, that would be fine too.
Okay, yeah.
The second story being habitable doesn't mean the first story can't be.
Sure, sure, okay.
I think the point was to potentially allow, if you want, a garage on the first floor and an apartment above it as a classic thing. But if you choose to do a two-story, that's up to you.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And and to, to clarify what Colin asked about, so if if it's fifteen feet, it can go into the setback.
No, it could be two stories. It is having to. Yeah.
Instead of a garage, you have a granny flat.
As a conditional use.
Uh.
As a conditional use. Right, so the board would.
Twenty eight feet.
But this works.
Yeah.
It's got a.
Can I, can I?
setback for the property.
Yeah, so accessory structures have their own setback applied to them, this would, you know, uh, something constructed under this language, you know, assuming it's cleaned up a little bit, would, uh, also those same setbacks for accessory structures would apply to this.
And I've built a two-story twenty eight foot high A D U. Right?
If you choose, that's written, yeah.
Um, with 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 my, my wife's granny living on the bottom and my granny living on the top.
One unit.
One unit.
They have to.
You can only have one A D U unit, you can have two floors, but one unit.
Daymar. We gotta be talking to each other.
But one unit.
If they wanna be roommates, they can.
But why do they have to be habitable?
Exactly.
Have to cohabitate.
I mean, the language is misleading.
Right.
Yeah, right, we need like.
I think you're.
Much weaker, we bring it, we're weaker.
We need.
The reason we made it habitable, we we chose the word habitable was so that we could.
I, I struck a message from before, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that is, I I guess to finish my point, are we um, are we preventing, but by 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 making twenty eight feet not being able to do into the setback, are we preventing some of this from happening? I mean, that's a, that's a big push for this to happen, stuff like this. And I'm just wondering, are are we creating a situation where some, something wouldn't be built? If it's.
Because it can't be in the setback?
Yes.
I mean, yeah.
So first thing I would say is you reduced the setback to five feet last fall, so it's already gone, the side setbacks.
Side setbacks.
Side setback is already gone from, from ten to five.
Okay, alright.
So that, so that um waiver, conditional use language was written when it was a deeper setback already.
Mm-hmm.
So you've already sort of by right granted an additional five feet towards the side property line. The back property line, I think, is the bigger question, cause I think it's still fifteen. Um, that also was reduced in the fall, but um, you have, you have reduced those setbacks by right, but you were correct that you couldn't, um the the idea, my understanding with meeting with these guys, is the twenty eight feet is a size of a of a house.
Mm-hmm.
And so the idea is if you wanna make your, an A D U that is that high, or to put the A D U above the garage, that you would only be able to put it where you could put a house. And so you can't put it, there is no exception to that side setback, there's no conditional use for putting a house in the side setback.
Yeah.
Which is effectively the bulk that you're talking about.
I, 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 I like the logic, I feels like if if we feel that we should be able to put a twenty eight foot i- i- if we should decide that we wanna be able to put a twenty eight foot building within the setback, that more seems to me as a sign that we should review the setback than, oh wow, with waivers is now essentially the size of a crime.
I'm just thinking about, you know, I I know this is a huge push to allow these structures, and I think we need to do everything we can within reason to make them possible, I just wanna make sure that we're not preventing leaving things that that don't necessarily need to be. Right, so I think there's a, there's a couple of options that you could choose here. Um, you could say that these accessory structures uh that are up to twenty eight feet in height as long as the second story is habitable. Um, you could say across the board, they get treated as standard accessory structures, which is five feet from all property lines. Or you could um retain, and I think we'd have to do, you pointed out something important, that we'd have to do a little bit of modification in that other section to say you can get the twenty eight feet um as long as you're meeting the setbacks of a principal home, so that would be your fifteen feet from the back.
Right.
And if you, to Duncan's point, if you want, you could say, and as a conditional use, the board would review it, you could be down to that five feet, so that would be the way to sort of achieve.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, that seems pretty reasonable, it feels.
Yeah.
Cause then you're allowing the accessory structure by right to be where a house could be.
Mm-hmm.
And then if you want to be closer than that, so we'd, we'd have to do a little bit of tweaking, but I think that's a, that's an important one there.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, that's.
That seems plausible.
Does that sound like a good solution there?
Yeah.
So you're gonna rework F. We're gonna rework F a little bit and that other companion section, three.
Yeah.
Fourteen, it's in fourteen, I don't remember.
Yeah.
Fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, oh, no.
Yeah.
Yeah.
H, oh, that's.
Yes, it's that's, yeah, it's in fourteen and it's in three eleven, I think, that's the.
In three, I think is where it was cut from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, um, did somebody have a question on the table, or something? We.
Colin.
I think that was the answer, yeah.
I guess I have a question on the table.
Yeah.
Um, it, we use like the principal, I went up quite a bit in some of these categories.
Yeah.
Um, which, you know, like for, um, what's this, the medium multi-use, it went from twenty eight to forty five.
Yeah.
Is that like, I guess, is that because the stories you're getting? Like I guess I just am wondering kind of how that how you're thinking went there.
Yeah, um so
I think I I think I I've asked about that last time we had, well, like I request something like that, undergrounds are basically trying to give people a bit of
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Essentially, we we don't want crazy huge McMansions, like single families, but say, oh, if you're willing to put a few more units and we'll give you a little bit of bumps, you can say it looks like a triple-decker or something like three, a lobby jump.
Right, so you asked us to give you language that would look at creating that medium multiplex, allowing it to be one more story than the small multiplex, so in function, that would be like, if you go to South Village, there's some two-story ones
Okay, right.
that are like ten plexes, and then there's a couple of eight plexes that are three stories. Functionally, that would be the difference.
Okay.
So you don't have to take it, but that's what you asked us to come back with something, so for that type, you get more height.
Is the, what is sixty feet though? Cause the the one category went from twenty-eight feet to sixty feet, that feels like kind of a big jump.
Mission, that like landscape, um so uh let's see, so those are the last two on the table. That would be medium, multi, and large, multi. That's sixty feet is what we heard from some of the private sector folks, that would be acceptable for being able to build out certain, you know, there's there's a lot of different ways to build a building that has twelve units in it, you can, you know, uh spread it out wider, you can go a little bit taller, you can find some kind of combination there out. So um from what we heard from them, that seems like a pretty reasonable number. Well, I'm still getting some feedback from some of these folks, um and uh so, you know, some of these might be subject to change, but that was kind of like an initial estimate of what a a good limit would be to allow them enough room to build out the actual numbers that of units that we allow in these in these building types um while still putting some kind of, you know, uh reasonable limit, so that they aren't, it isn't just a totally unlimited building height. Um so that, you know, that is still subjected to 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 some change, but I think that is kind of the ballpark uh figure that we're looking at. Um the other thing too is that, you know, not every twelve-unit building is going to necessarily have, is gonna require sixty feet of height. Again, you know, there's a lot of different ways to build it. We're looking into the future for when, you know, for when horizontal and square footage is going, and acreage is going to be um less available, and we're gonna be focusing more on infill. And uh we have to allow some of that of 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 vertical, if that's gonna be, you know, feasible economically.
Yeah, for the the table, is it medium or large? That is the smallest thing that is sixty feet.
That would be medium.
I think that's large.
I think it was large.
Oh, is it?
The medium is the forty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, yeah.
Medium is forty-five, it's
Would that, was that ever twenty-eight or was that a offbeat?
Yeah, it's the
It was twenty-eight.
Dude, twenty-eight for large.
Or medium.
No, for medium.
It was twenty-eight for large too.
I know.
No, it was twenty-eight for large too.
Or was that a typo in this red line?
Let me look, I can look it up.
Okay, hang on.
Yeah.
Cause that's why I just
I think there might be typo.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we really talk through this if we're we're doubling height on something.
Okay, so here is, this is the red line, but I think we should look at the adopted current, just in case we made a little typo in that.
Sure.
That's what I mean.
So this is for large.
We'll keep it up there as much as we can read.
Chart is divided on our packet.
Yeah, yeah, it's
Chart is divided on our packet, which is really hard to follow.
Yeah.
Still getting used to the new website, that would be not intent at all.
Yeah.
That's not big, yeah.
The adopted large wasn't twenty-eight, it was um stories, it was five stories.
Yeah, I think that twenty is a typo there.
Oh, it was five stories and there was no height, so it was twenty-eight.
There was no, the the version that was adopted in the fall had no maximum heights, but it had five maximum stories.
Yeah.
Okay.
For large multi-use.
Cause that that feel, yeah, so that makes sense, so it's actually not much of a change at all or any, right?
Twenty-eight.
That's the the really barely any, because five school buildings is about sixty feet.
Twenty-eight
We said This is pretty
Exactly.
Twenty-eight was the pitched roof max height from medium multi-unit, and twenty-five was the flat.
So the medium is going from twenty-eight to forty-five, so that is, that's the change.
Yes. Yes.
That's maybe if if the public is looking at this, that's what they're
No.
That's a, yeah, so the the idea there is that before it was effectively the same as everything smaller. Um and what we've heard from a few, what Nick has heard from a few different developers is uh stack, you could have twelve units in a three-level, four on each, everybody has a corner unit effectively, in three levels, and that if you're talking about fourteen feet in a commercial-style building, um that gets you to forty-two, and so that's when the cap of forty-five gives a little bit of wiggle room for doing a three-floor medium multi.
So I pulled up the um current um LDR and we currently uh where it's um medium multi-units, that's five to twelve at twenty-five for principal and for flat uh roofs and uh twenty-eight, so it's like that same has the, yeah. So that's correct, that's correct here. Mm-hmm. And then it's it's the line below that's
Yeah.
That one that didn't never had a
Didn't never had a twenty-eight.
Never had twenty-eight.
Yeah, yeah.
So the twenty-eight just needs to be
That was restricted at five total stories.
One, one thing I might clear about is that the pitched was like the average from the bottom to the top of the roof.
Yes.
So in practice, the building, you could build a medium multi-unit, it would in in the field be a lot higher than twenty-eight, like but thirty-two or thirty-five, because the roof was
To to the to the peak, but we all get measured to the mid
Yeah. Sure, they're more probably like how how tall the building's peak is, it's not actually that dramatic, it's not a seventeen-foot increase to the peak, it's smaller than seventeen feet, I guess that's what I'm trying to say here.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so this
Uh
um the large multi is, I think, we're we're gonna propose to leave it unchanged in height, right? Cause we had calculated based on stories previously.
It was it was on, it was stories previously, which is the the five that's crossed out, that's correct.
It's the stories.
So now instead of saying five stories, you're saying sixty feet, so it's essentially not a change.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, that
Yeah, yeah.
Oh yeah, we can get rid of the
That's
The difference in
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The typo there is that that shouldn't have happened over twenty-eight.
Yeah, it shouldn't have.
Okay.
This this seems reasonable, this seems like something, you know, if people like this, we can talk through this with the
Yeah. And the and the the medium, right, there's like you can't build those in low scale anyways, like that's really just kind of
Right.
Kennedy, essentially, that neighborhood is sort of the main area that you can build those, but you can't build a large.
You can build it in MSN and you can build it in HSMU, but you cannot build it in LSN or Queens City Park.
Yeah. True, and that's also a point too, is that this means that if you want to build a twelve-unit on Shelburne Road or something, you can do that, previously you couldn't, right, cause it was, it wasn't by district, or still, it's by unit type, not by district.
You could you could have built a multi, but it would have been limited to the twenty-eight, you could have built a medium multi in the along Shelburne Road, but it would have been limited to twenty-eight.
Yeah, so you would only make it high enough if it had enough, if it had over thirteen units, yeah.
That's nice, or you got an inclusionary sounding bonus.
Also, also for
Right, that's, yeah.
We just talked about
That will change um situation.
But In terms of areas that are gonna be getting significantly larger buildings, really, it only, it feels like the only area that's getting a noticeable like increase in maximum building height is essentially the medium-scale mixed-use, medium-scale neighborhood is really the only area that's getting a twenty-eight to forty-five jump.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
That's really the only area we got.
Yeah.
Yep, and the the other thing to notice, um large multi-unit, um if you're thirteen units or or above, you are going to have to do inclusionary.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And then so you'll effectively get another story.
Right, and you had already gone through that last fall, so that's not a change here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
You had already sort of planned that to be sort of one lower and then you'd get it.
Yeah.
Um so that's not something you need to re-discuss unless you want to.
No.
Just a technical item on the on the table, if we keep the accessory height as a column here, I think you need another note under the table.
That is a good point, yeah, yeah.
Could you, you need to refer back to that thing we just talked about.
That is a good point.
Or just delete that entirely and
Has it regulated elsewhere?
Oh, it's, I don't know.
Cause that accessory, that's all gonna change, the fifteen's gonna go to twenty-eight.
But there are two different definitions, accessories, essentially.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, some will
There's like the little ones that can go in the setback, and there's the big ones that can't go in the setback.
Any other technical height issue, items? Okay, then I think um we can move on to item six.
Item six.
Which is the updating LDRs, updating the table of uses.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um and they're specific to the service station options.
Yes.
My dick.
Yeah, I'm gonna, that was my my only item for the night.
By Nick.
Yeah. Bye.
Have a nice
Have a good night, folks.
You're gonna, thank you.
Have a good night, folks, online.
Okay, service station, I feel a little bad, I brought this up, made it very complicated.
No, but I mean, it's it's actually, so first of all, the everything that's in italics is what is currently in the LDRs. So it was, it was already messy and it was already kind of internally problematic, cause it referred to itself and some other things.
Mm-hmm.
Um yeah.
Should we skip right to your recommendation?
Or
Sure, whatever.
Or there
Or I have one very minor technical note.
Yeah.
Um so you switched it like used the word fossil fueling sta- like there's fossil fuel.
This is something we tossed around, yeah.
Yeah, my my main concern of that is it's uh hydrogen fueling stations, those were, they're like, it's not science fiction, they exist in California.
Hmm. Yeah.
That is not a fossil fuel, but the filling stations look like gas stations.
Mm-hmm.
Cause you have this huge tank of compressed hydrogen and everything, it's not fossil fuel.
Yeah.
So I might suggest either use something like liquid or compressed gas fuel or something, or even just not electricity.
Yeah. Right, we started
Yeah, that's the main thing, is we're trying to not have this be conflated with EV charging, which
Yeah.
you know, we're gonna see where this goes over the next decade, but a couple of EV charging stations exist in all sorts of uses, I saw
Right, healthy living is not a service station.
Yeah. Sure.
Nor is the Talbot's Plaza, right?
I almost feel like not electric, just
But I
like vehicle fueling beside electricity, like, cause that's what we're trying to do anyway.
Yeah. We started with gasoline and then went gasoline slash diesel, and then gasoline slash diesel slash ethanol, and then what, and then
Could you
Hydrogen using fossil fuels now.
No.
So Colin, do you think maybe just in the definition, it could just say electric, does not include electric, or you know, something?
Service station, it so it did have that, um
I think it's a definite service station to just say like vehicle fueling beside electricity.
Yeah, so just
Right, I think that's pretty
Right, the the free or the the current definition includes the free or retail dispensing of electricity for vehicles within a roofed on-street or off-street parking space shall not con- constitute a service station, so that was that was in the previous language.
Okay.
But a service station may have
Right, and that's, so we wanna make sure that we're not accidentally precluding them from service stations, because we're starting to see them, the new one in Richmond has
Right. Yeah.
Oh, I see.
uh high-high speed electric charger as part of the fuel, the 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 otherwise gas station.
Yeah.
So I guess
So we wanna like exclude
A store, but I guess then a store station is something that dispenses fuel that is not electricity.
Yeah.
Is that right?
But may also dispense electricity.
But 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 the fact, but it, I guess it it has, it does do that, but it's also
Yes.
It's either the liquid or compressed gas.
Yes, yeah, but it's it's still, yeah, excuse me, yeah, it's it's weird.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um and you know, I can guarantee we're gonna have, we are, we're gonna look at the electric charging uh we're proposing to in the next year or so.
But you know, we're
I imagine then in the next decade, we're gonna have to relook at this entire thing.
Sure.
Because it
You soon enough, because you're gonna have it.
I don't
I mean, see, Berlin is doing, they're like mounting EV chargers on their utility poles.
Right, which is, yeah.
Yeah, it's like
I have you have a comment from the public.
Yeah, is is flammable the adjective you wanna use? Is gasoline, diesel?
No. But batteries are too.
Batteries are flammable.
Well, but not the charging of them.
Oh, maybe.
Well
There's
Natural gas, propane, hydrogen, they're all flammable, and they're all governed by state and federal like regulations probably, right?
There's electric, yes.
Flammable is the best term.
I I like Colin's idea.
Just
I think that might be a little
I see what you, I mean, I see what you're getting at.
I think I think I think there are multiple ways to do this, I think.
I don't know about that.
Well, it seems like maybe you can, you can work with a definition based on the discussion.
You can check it in the
We can Yeah.
I think we, or just have some really kind of mouthy sentence, this is very clear, like we just mean anything that's all electricity.
I mean, we we have the opposite.
Yeah.
Um
Well, no, I I I I wanted to move on from this, cause we've we've gone down the rabbit hole pretty far here.
Situation.
Yeah.
I wanted to hear staff justification for for option two versus option one.
Let me remind myself which one is which.
The one is separate.
Retain.
I just I just wanna get a kind of your overview of why it's like a two and a uh pros and cons of
Leave sort of data as part of the owner vehicle, but then pathos is an add-on like a drive.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I thought about this a lot, actually, but sort of an embarrassing amount. Um and I think where I I am fine with the commission going either way. It's not something where I'm saying this is what I believe is right and this is what I believe is wrong, just to put that out, first of all. Second of all, I think um as we have alluded to in this conversation, there's a lot of uses that are similar but different enough, where I think what we're trying to actually regulate is the dispensing of fuel and the location at and the equipment and the structures and the canopy and everything that comes with dispensing of you know, fossil fuel, hydrogen fuel, liquid liquid compressed gas, all these kinds of fuels that you pump into your vehicle. In the past, there's been a lot more of like small mechanic shop that has fuel fuel outs front, we have very few of those left. Um it's much more convenience store and gas pumps. Um and sometimes it's like close to a short, you know, a shorter restaurant with a gas pump, like things are edging up on different things for that building. So like service station as it was in like the fifties or sixties is not the same thing that it is now, and it felt weird to me to regulate a fast food restaurant and a small convenience store in a building as being defined by the gas pumps out front, where and something without the gas pumps, that's exactly the same as that, would be regulated as consumer um facing commercial otherwise. So to me, it made sense to divorce the actual structures and like the the underground tanks and the pumps and the the all of that that comes with it from the building that is otherwise attracting customers to the site. So that's where I was coming from, is that it's a service station in my mind is no longer a single thing. You may still have like, you know, mom-and-pop mechanic shop that has a fuel a fuel thing out front that's available to the public, um but you may also have a a car rental that, you know, in their business plan, they're like, you know what, we are gonna sell our gas that's available, because we have it on-site, we're gonna sell it to the public out front. So regulating the thing that we're actually trying to regulate, which was the the fueling, as the thing that we wanna have separated by a thousand feet and and is regulated the way that we regulate service station now, and making the treatment of the of the sort of auxiliary store, restaurant, mechanic, whatever, um more consistent with something like that that doesn't have the gas pumps. So that's, that was my sort of thought.
Think there's convenience store and a restaurant in a service station?
Often, yeah.
Often, yeah.
Yeah, like major.
You have a uh Dunkin' Donuts and uh Maplefields in the same building.
We're not in the Maplefields, you're like
Well, that's that's convenient.
Damn it, Maplefields.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, so, well, last thing.
Round.
Cause that, well, cause that in the way that we're consolidating the other uses, but which is not what we're talking about today, but is in this big package, is the Dunkin' Donuts, Maplefields would be one type of use now, not two.
Together, yeah.
Hmm.
It would be just consumer-facing commercial.
So we were sort of thinking about it in the way that you've looked at drive-throughs as a feature
Yeah.
of a use rather than a use of itself, and you can regulate that feature, so we've said today along Shelburne Road, drive-throughs are only allowed for things, so you could um s- and that same thing would it's sort of this, it's a feature of a use rather than a use in and of itself, it's a physical thing that you want to allow in some cases, but not in others.
But it would be regulated by commercial, I'm sorry, was it motor, what vehicle, commercial, I'm sorry.
And then would be required to be separated by a thousand feet for this feature of it, so you could have a motor vehicle use, you could have two repair shops across the street from its themselves, two new ones, but only one, but they could not have a gas pump within a thousand feet.
And which?
On test.
I I I, one quick, i- if we're now regulating the service station as separate commercial, maybe I'm misunderstanding our current regulations, will that then mean as a consequence that you'd have to put the service station in front of the fuel pumps? Cause like we have the whole things where like the primer starts needing in front of the park needs in the back, are the fuel pumps then parking needs to be behind?
I think the service station is only the pumps now.
Yeah, but, okay, so is that's allowed to be in the front? Look, I I just know the whole thing, like we have a building needing in front of parks in the back, does that not mean that the that the pump's needing behind the building?
Yeah, so um there was a case at some point that the DRB dealt with, and talking about whether
With a beta?
gas is, whether a gas pump and stopping your car, cause you have to, to then fuel is considered parking
Okay, yeah. Okay.
or not, and my understanding is they decided, sort of twisted some themselves around to decide that that was not parking, that was using the fuel pump.
Okay.
So what we're saying is like, you what you would not be allowed to do is say like, here's, the road is here, here's your um fuel pumps, here's your store, and a lot of stores will have parking that's right here.
Interesting, okay.
You would not be able to have that, but you'd be able to have the fuel pump.
Okay, so so it's all sort of, the DRB has already answered my question.
They've they've answered it in a in a twi- sort of twisting it around way, like they landed on an an interpretation, which is their job.
Yeah.
We are working on cleaning up the language, that they don't have to sort of turn themselves in knots to be able to land on the
Yeah, I mean, there's a
I mean, it is a little bit of a round peg in a square hole.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because there's this requirement that parking not be to the front of buildings.
Mm-hmm.
Um along Shelburne Road, there's also a requirement in the urban design district that there be a direct path from the building's front door to the street. Um and so if you're proposing a new service station, it's tricky to put the pumps um in front of the building and to have this direct route, it's It's so this is this is what the DRB wrestled with is how does how does this exist? And I think, you know, the answer is it's tricky. Um, a easier application for developer would be to put them around back.
Or to even to the side.
Or to the side.
Just
Yeah.
here's your building, here's your pumps, this is the road.
I'd be surprised if they did that, but yeah, I guess that's all, yeah.
In practice
It it's a.
Yeah.
In practice, the field of service stations, at least for now, there's a little bit of contraction going on um corner of uh um uh Patchen Road and um sorry, yeah.
Willisson. Leaves Willis and Otto left.
There's, yeah, there's two of them that were next to each other and one of them left. We're not seeing a lot of other ones that are leaving, and because of your thousand foot rule, we're not seeing a lot of new ones happening, so at best, we're seeing some redevelopment of them.
Cause that's happening quite a bit, you're going along these places, I've seen a lot of gas stations start tearing some stuffs down and then rebuilding from scratch.
Yeah.
Does that then, would that would that new, if it's if it's going from a gas station to another gas station that's bigger, does that then, do do they now have to comply with the new regulations?
If it is a full tear down, probably, but I can't say for sure, there's a lot of certain interpretation to it.
Okay.
Board would have to make a determination as to whether the pumps are being torn down and all that, like, you know, all the infrastructure under the ground, or just the building behind it.
Dude, okay. Got you.
It gets a little, you get into non-conformities assessment.
Well, you've got one that being the full
Mm-hmm.
marty, pump tanks out everything and across the street, you've got a new one, uh opposite um
Mm-hmm.
Right.
which is built from scratch. And the primary use of, I mean, the the of a service station that we're talking about is fueling, so.
Uh.
Not by not by revenue.
Not by revenues. Not by revenues.
Interestingly, talking with the fuel folks, it depends on the location.
That's because we haven't increased the taxes on fuel in a hundred years.
That's not my.
A lot of them
Well, that's but that's not their profit.
It has become sort of convenience stores uh where the attractant is filling your gas.
Yeah. Hmm.
That's where they actually, you know, it's sort of like movie theaters to the extent that they still exist, make more of their money off popcorn than they do off movies, but the reason you go there is to watch the movie.
Hmm.
So it's what's what's the driving use, it's hard to say anymore.
Or rather, probably the fuel, the fuel is probably the bigger revenue, but the profit margins are like one percent.
Maybe.
Yeah.
So let me ask a question, so what what you're proposing is the use would still be under motor vehicle focused commercials, is that correct?
Right.
And then the little section D service stations that would pertain to the pumps and that thousand foot
Yep.
that would that would really regulate.
That would basically keep the status quo for that function.
Okay.
So let's say a dealership
Mm-hmm.
which sells electric vehicles has a charging station.
Yep.
If they add a fuel pump for that for their petrol powered cars, they become a service station?
No, cause it's not commercial.
No, they're a large motor vehicle focused commercial use and they are regular, they're the location of that gas pump is regulated. It can't be within a thousand feet of something else.
And most of the time, if that exists, they're not selling gasoline.
If it's available to the public.
So.
Same same applies to rental agencies.
Right, so there's a rental.
They don't generally sell, they fill their own pumps.
Just think, if they if they chose to
Right.
it's something that they could.
They might, they might.
I've never seen a rental car where you could go in and gas up your car just out of the blue.
I mean, I guess it doesn't count, they will sell you a full pay, but.
Our job is to imagine the future.
Yeah.
And it's it depends a lot on
Yeah.
the local regulations and aviation things and all sorts of stuff.
So this um I mean, I like option two.
I'm fine with it, yeah.
I like option two also.
Mm-hmm.
Option two, and and you opposed option two?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we like option two with the adjustment.
Just. Just clarify for me where which in which primary residential areas would we allow one of these service stations?
Can't be within a thousand feet of another one.
Or you were saying residential specifically.
It wouldn't be in a residential.
It has to be motor vehicle.
Only allowed in.
Well, it it falls under motor vehicle focused commercial.
Right, so it's only allowed in commercial industrial districts.
What are the districts where the motor vehicle? Cause that that's what, Michael, that's what it would be regularly.
Think.
Yeah, but I'm I'm looking at the old table, you know, I don't think it yeah.
Also allowed to see one.
Well, it's gonna be in the you it's gonna be based on our new district.
Yeah, no, re- rearboard vehicle focused commercial is allowed.
Okay.
It would be allowed, but it also has a stipulation that it can't be within a thousand feet of anywhere other commercial pumps.
Mm-hmm, probably not gonna have very many new ones.
So.
Yeah, yeah, well, the new one, the new one.
Well, it's the point, I wanted to make sure we kept this, so we didn't just really nearly get new on the like.
Still a road, this is uh.
Yeah.
Some other thing.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's less than a thousand feet, it's just a.
Okay, do we have an actual question in changing this or?
No. I I I follow our two, there's just one last comment I wanna make on this item. Um, this might uh this might more directed to that for future looking into um.
I have a quick answer, C one air, C one auto, C two mixed IC and air is motor vehicle focused commercial small. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Colin's question.
So my or uh it was it was on the lighting section, which I guess is unchanged. Um, it it's essentially, it says
They didn't talk about that.
Adequate, it's like it says, it it basically says has to be adequately lighted and that no light to spill out into residential areas.
Yeah.
This this is from my perspective, someone who deals with lighting areas. Adequate is kind of, you know, it's a squishy term and no light light will always spill out. The way that we deal with it for state highways is we have specific standard from the IES, like it's a lighting trade group.
Lumens.
Yeah, it's like lumens, whatever, and then it it basically they have like feeling, oh, for this land use, you should have this minimum number of lumens and and then all areas outside your lot need to be below this number, so it's like this area needs to this and this area need to that, so.
And that's our general standard, I wonder here, what are we trying to achieve above our general standard, is it to be?
The the just the old language.
Okay.
Okay, so we already, so we already.
Have that, I think this was supposed to be, maybe we should tweak it a little bit to talk about like specifically shielded.
Oh, okay. It is pretty vague in that.
Cause you can add a shield on the back of a of a lighting fixture to make the spill over even less.
Yeah.
I I guess.
So I guess my my counter to that will be that nowadays with modern lighting design, you don't need those usually because the light itself is angle correct.
Donna.
Like the light itself is is angle to achieve the standards without being a shield necessarily.
If Donna were here, she would say that our standards are adequ- well, they they are good for the era in which they were adopted.
Sure, sure.
So they're 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 not the most
Yeah.
up to date ones, but they do talk about being downcast and
Mm-hmm.
and that kind of thing, yeah.
Shielded.
Okay, gotcha, but we 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 have lighting standards elsewhere, this is just kind of a little
But but it.
It might be.
extra bit of embellishment on them, okay.
Yeah, this is just lifted from the old um what was already in the language, but.
But there are there are more specific standards elsewhere that Donna say are imperfect, but they're
Yeah. Yeah.
O- okay, okay, then I.
Might be newer than this standard.
And there's. There's lighting of the signs, there's lighting of, I think they are newer than the standard.
So this is, so sort of that kind of overall.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I I see, I mean.
But we can we can clarify.
Yeah, oh, that's all.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, on to item seven, um which is bedrock removal regulation update.
Yes, so um speaking of three very different topics tonight. Um, so uh the council put around the policy priorities that they wanna be talking about this subject. Um, there've been uh there there's a couple of driving reasons why this is here, no pun intended. There has been um a a in a a case in the southeast quadrant of the city where um hydraulic chiseling was used in lieu of blasting, and at the time, this was a subject that was entirely essentially regulated by the by Act two fifty, there were blasting requirements and for a variety of reasons that we don't need to go into, they chose to do chiseling. And there wasn't
A jackhammer.
Um hydraulic jackhammering, so with like an excavator.
Was it noisy?
Um, the council has looked at this, um they got a um sort of an approach provided by uh um planning zoning staff and the city attorney a couple of months ago on how to address this subject of um making sure that future development is being thoughtful in this realm and um the recommendation which council um agreed with was to um address components of it through the nuisance ordinance in the um instances where for whatever reason, there has not been a develop a a direction in development review, because as you know, your zoning only applies going forward, that doesn't address things that were previously approved. And also that the best place to really address the how bedrock is being ru- removed is through the development review process, that is when everything else is being looked at, and so that was sort of this two-pronged approach. It while at the same time, you'll see that there's a little bit of text in there that takes a few things out of your performance standards that are really nuisance issues. So as described in the memo, you know, nuisance ordinance is really good at dealing with one-time unexpected noise that is not planned for, so you know, a big party at night or you know, somebody is just operating way outside for a a a a brief period of time, way outside of what they're supposed to do. Meanwhile, the performance standards are much better dealing with a thing that is always the case. So the DRB, for example, looked at a case setting aside bedrock for a second. Uh, a few years ago, when the residents at Corey Hill came in um near the Staples Plaza, they had a big giant HVAC that was gonna run twenty-four seven, and it was right next to adjacent homes. The DRB said, it looks to us like you might be exceeding our performance standards, and so they put certain conditions on that they had to have this dampening thing that brought the sound, because that's not an irregular nuisance issue, that is a ongoing what this thing is. So those are the two components of this.
That's kind of like garbage trucks picking up garbage, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's a tricky one, cause it's regular, but it's also irregular, I mean, it's on a regular schedule, but it's not all the time.
Right.
I thought those were explicitly prohibited.
Garbage trucks are regulated through the
Nuisance, yeah, yeah, but nuisance.
nuisance, because they are the part that we called out, they're not really a use.
Oh, I, yeah. Yeah.
They're not an on-site use.
They're not a zoning issue.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Um, and then the last component of this, just to sort of make sure that you're seeing all the pieces of this is we you talked back in April about um more projects are um going to be not going through Act two fifty, blasting historically has been addressed through Act two fifty. So as a subject area that we wanna make sure that we're we're regulating, regardless of the form of bedrock removal, if it's not gonna be in Act two fifty, um we wanna make sure that it's being addressed somewhere in regulations, so that's where that's where this comes in too, so it's both acknowledging a thing that happened, but also look into the future and you know, whether we get partial or ultimately a full Act two fifty exemption, this is making sure that we're covering a subject area, so that's the background. And then you have a draft in there um that covers a approach that we're recommending for how through the development review process, a applicant would determine the best way to remove um bedrock. Um, we've had, we've had a lot of conversations with different developers um uh and and how they have interacted with it. And I guess the 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 thing that we've mo- mainly learned is we can't have a one size fits all tool, because depending on the ground conditions, depending on the scale of the project, there might be different methods that would be the best way of doing it, and so that's where we um are recommending this four criteria about what the city is trying to achieve, that somebody has to demonstrate what the best, why they have recommended the way that they've or proposed the way that they proposed it, whether it's with some level of chipping, some level of blasting, what are the conditions under which they would do it, and then um have that happen through development.
What's missing is the little rhinoceros in the room. Um, you know, it doesn't, the bedrock, bedrock removal doesn't satisfy the need to manage major topographical disturbance, which we have an example already in South Burlington. Um, so I'm and 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 the criteria and the things that we need to avoid does not include anything about environmental damage to the to the wildlife that used to live there. Um, in in the case of Kimber Road, there was a clear cut, which we don't we don't encourage, we don't permit anymore, and the removal of a mountain. I mean, it's it's like mine mining in the south, it it's a hot issue for me, cause I think that is one of the worst things that's ever been done in South Burlington. Um, I don't know what they're gonna do there, all there's just piles of rock right now, but they've removed a hillock uh and all the trees, there were hundreds of trees there. Um, this doesn't address that kind of um development. I mean, development.
Right, I think that that's an accurate assessment, Michael, so the the draft is as presented is about how it is removed, if it's being proposed to be removed.
Hmm.
Um, when the subject um that council was um interested in this year was making sure that there are regulations on how. So that's that would be.
That's fine, I don't I don't want, I I don't want just to be held up because you know, it needs to move ahead.
But you you are correct, it's not regulating.
But uh at some point, uh we need to make sure that um that development projects are designed and implemented to minimize the negative environmental impacts. Not now, but maybe that's the next iteration of not bedrock removal, but topographical change, might call it that. I don't know if anybody else feels strongly about it, but a lot of people do, that I speak to go on Kim- Kimber Road that say, oh my god, what have they done? I have a couple of um overhead shots of that before and after um using Google Earth. It's quite revealing. Um, and there were there was a resident flock of turkeys that used to live there, they're gone. Um, you could see them almost every day.
I I I I guess I I would agree, that's definitely an important issue that's worth discussing at some point, but yeah, it might be something like, next time we're kind of working on our annual priority, we can sort of add that to the list and chat through like, is this something we wanna address?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, no, I I I definitely agree with you, it's something we, you know, it'll be good to talk about some point, and we should consider talking about that. We got a lot of things we wanna talk about, you know what I mean?
So I guess for tonight, let's focus on the bedrock part, um
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, do did you have a thing?
One one distinct, this tend to it, and this might be way out of scope, uh quickly is, I'm just sort of thinking like, it I I I won't bring this up, cause it seems that we're talking about like types of development, like development activities themselves that cause undue noise issues that aren't covered by the nuisance ordinance. Um, there was a building that went up next to me, the five ten Shelburne Road, that had a generator running twenty-four seven, like it wasn't a crazy, it was it was a generator, like just your classic old cat, you know, they drop it off, it's you know, like ten feet by eight feet or whatever. And it was running for about a month or two, and it was like right on the corner next apartment, it was like, you know, fifty feet from my ear for two months. Mm, it wasn't like a super loud construction noise, so I didn't like call in a complaint for a nuisance ordinance, cause it was still it wasn't, I would say particularly that much louder than a road, but it was definitely like placed right next to the building, and I was wondering, i- is that the kind of thing that I should have just know, I should have just called in a nuisance ordinance? Or is that something that isn't really covering nuisance ordinance and perhaps like would be appropriate to add to a bill like this that's talking about development case, cause in this example, for example, if they had like restricted the number of hours they need to use this generator, so once they got an electric, they stopped using it. Or if they'd say even put it on the other side of the law, where it wasn't literally like, it was ten, maybe like twenty feet away from the five thousand feet because of the turn four, the people in the first four were maybe twenty feet with generator for like a month or two, and I don't know if that was it I'm just wondering, I I didn't immediately think it was nuisance ordinance, didn't think that was appropriate, but would that be something that could kind of work with this bill of DRB type stuff, cause yeah.
In between, it's sort of in between, like when when you were saying, there's that kind of a use that is created
Yeah.
or a noise that is created by a use that has to be approved by the DRB for, you know, going through its approval process, like the the HVAC unit. And then there's bedrock removal, which could be a couple of blasts, or it could be ongoing chipping, like there's a range of all things. To me, the gen- the construction generator is temporary because it's construction, like but two months is medium temporary, it's not the use, but it is more like the HVAC noise.
Right.
It it's more like the bedrock removal, it's 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 the construction, like the bedrock removal is
It's hiding from like. Yeah.
Yeah, that's like, no.
Sort of like the it's construction based.
Yeah.
Right, cause once a construction.
Right. Kind of same both of those things.
And and I
It's not.
And I'm sure if I had called it in, the developer, I said, well, I need that, I can't, I I have to power these things, they could land around hanging generator.
It's an interesting question, and we've re- we haven't wrestled with that exact question, so it's making me think a little bit about it.
Yeah.
The category that it that it sort of li- like sort of loosely falls under is you know, the building that's that's uh adjacent to you is gonna be a commercial building and residential. uh adjacent to you is gonna be a commercial building and residential. It is publicly, you know, it's not, it's not, there there's no real noise coming out of the building once it exists.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then there's the building of a building.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And there's certain noise that is sort of typical and and endemic to constructing of a building, you know, when the vehicles are backing up or you know, a roof is being installed and there's, you know, I I was hearing the last few days here, you know, that chung 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 nail guns.
Yeah.
That is sort of part of construction for a temporary period.
Mm-hmm.
This is sort of like, is that
Yeah.
is that like the nail gun and the screwdriver going or is that closer to a
And when they moved across the lot, when it was on their side of the lot, it wasn't a big deal. When they moved it like twenty feet from an apartment building, it became more of a big deal, which is why I sort of wonder if having a plan saying, hey, we got this generator running twenty four seven. Like say, if you like, say if you have construction noises that are within nuisance period, including a generator, cause it's a bad loud. But it was on the fence where earplugs for two months. It was a little annoying when I was sleeping. So would that be something say, hey, here's our generator plan, here's how we're gonna mitigate the impact, like if you have that
At night?
What? Yeah.
It was running at night?
Yeah.
And that's the thing, it shouldn't be like, cause you typically think so, they go, a lot of our construction projects, they have hours of operation and they're completed.
Number three.
Construction.
Yeah, so maybe it was covered by the nuisance. I guess I guess that's how the nuisance
Possibly, yeah, it's possible that it shouldn't have been. It's possible that um like sometimes, like some of the buildings around here um because they the the underground parking is sort of below grade, before they put in the permanent system for pumping of water, they probably had a generator for some period of time while they're building that, right? Cause they're digging out the foundations.
Yeah.
So then I don't like, I know not enough about construction to know whether that's typical or expected or what, but
Definitely. Well, I'm not sure we can ban generators at night in all sort of cases.
No, but you could, you could do some hours or placement that
But the
is far enough away from a residential um building so that the noise nuisance is reduced as much as you can.
So is this something that you would like us to take a look at? Um certainly not in the draft right now.
Absolutely.
Um is it something that you would like us to see if we can spin up some ideas for you?
If it feels like it would be
Yeah, I mean, I
As long as it's in the nuisance.
Yeah, it feels
Well, some way, right, so I guess if you decide yes, then I would probably, we would have a chat with our city attorney and discuss
Mm-hmm.
does that more properly fit in the nuisance ordinance or the LDR?
Agree.
It's a tricky thing that the LDR starts with the planning commission and the nuisance ordinance is with council, but I think council, the general guidance to us was
Yeah.
bring a logical approach of things that are supposed to be in the LDR, put them in the LDR, things that are supposed to be in the nuisance ordinance, put them in.
Yeah.
So if you'd like us to look into this subject, we're happy to do that.
Yeah, it seems like you should be able to in the LDR, um when people have a plan and they're they wanna come before the planning um department and say, this is what we're gonna build and this is how we're gonna do it. And it might require the the um bedrock removal. Um but it also includes, I don't know, all the the trucks where you put your road to get into the um
Right, and the things like the temporary roads and all that, we already do do.
space, the noise, like Right, but this seems temporary too.
What we don't really do is like, we don't do the like noise associated with nail guns, other than to say, construction can only happen from seven AM to ten to eight PM or whatever the number is. After that, you can't be running the nail guns.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right, but it seems like there's some things that are falling through the cracks because they they're happening outside of that construction timing.
Well, of course.
Right.
Right. Right, and there may be some reason for why it needs to, but maybe they're
Wait to mitigate.
We can look into how could how could be better.
How how long it's going, where it's placed. That that's where it kind of comes in place.
Look the plan, so this has the least um negative impact
Can look into that.
kind of residential areas.
Yeah, yeah. I had to go to the wall, reached out, I'm like, I need another one.
That's the point, that is, cars driving by area generator.
Right.
Especially if you have to run it outside of the seven to eight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. Okay, we can look into that. Great feedback, thank you.
I I think that's reasonable.
Okay, so are we on to minutes?
Hmm. I have a question whether whether it would be appropriate to add something under where we have limit duration, limit level of noise, limit impact on built environment, limit cost, uh limit the impact on on resident um wildlife communities? Or leave that for the my other subject matter? Because there's, you know, I think it's a
I would recommend it, I mean, it's it's up to you guys. I would recommend that that is a separate subject area, cause this is really about methods versus
I think it should be separate. It's more complicated than just
I I get that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're you're talking about revisiting Article twelve. That that's where it would reside, wouldn't it?
Hmm.
That's an environmental issue.
It, yeah, it might.
Yeah, the Article twelve's where that would be written.
Or or be or separate, cause Article twelve doesn't cover bedrock removal or topographical misproportionations.
Yeah. Right.
So, but it would deal with any inspired miller professionals.
Right.
It
Yeah, and I think that's a bigger population of
It it might.
Yeah, no, and I I'm not disagreeing with Michael, just I think that
Some time. No, no, that's fine. As long as it's on your hit list.
Well, for us to be on our hit list, you will have the opportunity starting at your next meeting to have a discussion of what your, what your recommended hit list is. So that's
For us to Your hit list.
Yeah, ours is yours.
Okay, let's do the minutes of April eighth.
Read them. Have everybody else read them?
I read.
I have. I would move them as presented.
I'll second that.
Uh I think Duncan won the second. Okay, any discussion on the minutes on favor?
I
I
That was unanimous. Um there are some other business items.
I should be the second to set a minute, Sue.
Did we have two?
Um
Set like add some, you added
Did I send it on Friday? Yes, I did. I sent it on Friday.
Yeah.
Oh, well.
It's
Yep.
Who remembers the dirt?
We were
It was, it's uh second
April twenty nine.
April twenty ninth.
Twenty twenty
Okay.
Yeah, no.
Do you wanna make a motion?
Move to approve the minutes of April, the planning commission minutes of April twenty ninth.
I'll I'll second it.
Okay, on seconds, any discussion? Okay, on favor?
Yeah.
Hi.
I
Unanimous. Um we did have the other business items, which I think are, no one has been comment on them, I suppose. Anything else?
Yeah, there is actually one other piece of other business, um if you will allow it. Um the question has been raised about naming the other side of it's of Detilio Drive. So Detilio Drive has been named from Market, the school. The other side is a planned roadway, is currently the driveway to the Poon property and to the parking lot that people can use for City Hall. Um but when we're talking about commercial units potentially being on the side of this new building, that um street needs to have a name as well. Um it's proposed to just be South Detilio.
Why not just Detilio?
Because the order of actions, unfortunately, this building came first. Under state law, you have to number
Oh.
starting at one at from the main street. So we that one is not built all the way over to Dorset Street.
Gotcha.
You have to pick a street from which to start.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, but it's just
That's the recommendation we got from the state E nine one one guy.
Okay, well, you can give it something completely different also, but They're awesome, so I'm buying that.
You can name You can also
I don't want to mess the, yeah, I don't want to say, I don't want to
Well, yeah, we can pass this to another meeting. We can talk about it at a different time, name something
So basically, at the intersection, it would start start with numbering one up this way.
I'm okay with that.
And then south would be
Right, so Main Street in Burlington does that. Everything start goes north and south from Main Street.
So ignore the south.
But it is named north and south. Do we need to name Detilio or north?
Yes, they're, yeah, we'll come with the north.
In in Burlington.
We currently have Dorset and North Dorset already.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
So Dorset is the main thing and then the little bit that continues on across Williston Road is North Dorset.
Oh, is that right?
Yep.
Uh like twenty feet.
Currently, it is about twenty feet.
Right, but there is a building on it, so.
There's a building with an address.
Yeah, I'm fine with South Detilio.
South Detilio.
I'm fine.
It's just, so with E nine one one, there's no issue, they get it, like that they get the call, they understand. So even though they need to remember
Yeah.
Yeah.
They recommended Yeah.
They'll say six South Detilio. Yeah.
I mean, they're the ones that recommend it, it sounds like, so.
The state recommended it. I think Jessica's talking about like if first responders would know what that means.
Yeah, like if I'm driving the ambulance, which I don't, like, am I gonna
You
But I I thought I thought it said it was the state E one nine one one.
I didn't talk about it.
Oh, they did, but not the local.
Yeah, they they use the state's map, is what I'm trying to say.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm I'm fine with South Detilio.
Yeah.
Me too.
Yeah.
It does seem better than coming up with a totally different.
Oh, yeah.
Either Detilio extension, but it sounds a little nicer.
My question was like, if you have numbering going in both directions, do we need Detilio to now be North Detilio? So very clear, that was my only question.
Could it be north Detilio?
I don't think you do.
I
No.
You don't have to make that decision tonight. If you would like, we're happy to sort of chat with
I don't think we should have them do what school kids do.
chat fire.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, they worked hard on that.
Oh, I know.
This is just adding cardinal directions to their
I'm fine to keep it saying Detillion, South Detillion. If people complain, we can always switch that to North Detillion later, because we have to switch it anyways if we were to do it, you know? Like, we have to go through and switch North Detillion.
So this is a thing
You wanna do a straw poll?
I would like an actual vote.
We need an actual vote to
All right, I move that the street opposite Detilio Street.
Detilio Drive.
Detilio Drive, on the south side of Market Street, be named South Detilio Drive.
I will second that.
Okay, any more discussion?
And we're okay to have a vote, even though you know some people can't, aren't joining us.
Yeah, okay.
Um, okay, all in favor?
I
I I
Unanimous, South Detilio Drive.
Uh last, last thing is to say, Sue, it's your birthday in three days. Happy almost birthday to you.
Happy birthday, Susan.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're here.
May is a good month.
Yeah.
May is a good
All right, thanks, everybody.
Okay.